Okay, thank you. Tell me when you're ready to begin, Lizeth.
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay, are you going to record? Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council. Today is January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. It's six thirty-five P. M., and I call this meeting to order. The meeting is being conducted virtually via the Zoom application. And what I'd like to do now is to have a roll call, please.
Mayor Cranjack?
Here.
Councilperson Wu?
Here.
Pharaoh?
There.
Park?
Yeah.
De Gregorio?
Here.
Sabari?
Here.
Katrubes?
Here.
Borough Attorney?
Here.
Borough Administrator?
Here.
And Clerk, everyone's present, Mayor.
Thank you, and I should just clarify that this is the caucus meeting. The regular meeting will follow this, and this is the meeting I'm calling to order now. Madam Clerk, would you please read into the record the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by the municipal clerk.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I add? Since this meeting is being conducted electronically pursuant to the COVID- nineteen pandemic and under the jurisdiction of Governor Murphy's executive order, starting with one oh three, Chapter eleven of the Public Laws of two thousand twenty and local finance notices promulgated thereafter, this meeting is being conducted electronically.
Okay, thank you for reading that into the record. And I thank the members of the public for joining us. At this time, we will be going into closed session. We have quite a bit of discussion to do in closed session, so we'll probably be back at about quarter to eight. But definitely by eight o'clock, I'm going to try to make sure we stay on schedule tonight. So thank you for joining. You could take a break, go have dinner, have a cocktail. We're going to put you all in the waiting room now until we come back. Thank you. Can I move to go into closed session, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay. Thank you, everyone. Ms. Duffy, would you please read into the record the appropriate language for us to go into closed session?
Whereas the Mayor and Council of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs has deemed it necessary to go into closed session to discuss certain confidential matters, whereas the minutes of the closed session will remain confidential as permitted under the Open Public Meetings Act or shall be released when there is no further need for confidentiality as authorized by the Borough Attorney. Now therefore be resolved that the Mayor and Council of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs will go into closed session for the following matters as permitted under the Open Public Meetings Act and JSA ten calling four dash twelve. Pending litigation regarding Borough of Englewood Cliffs Affordable Housing, eight hundred Sylvan Avenue LLC versus the Borough of Englewood Cliffs, also on affordable housing, Concerned Residents versus Borough of Englewood Cliffs and State versus Sapelsa. Also, we'll be speaking about contract negotiations, charter communications, and borough phone system.
Okay, thank you. Please place the public into the waiting room. Thank you.
Okay, everyone's in, Mayor.
Thank you, and I apologize to the public for keeping you waiting. We had several very important matters to discuss in closed session, so welcome back. Can I have a motion to come out of closed session, please?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Your Honor, let the record reflect that all members of the governing body present to commence the executive session are present to recommencement of the open session, as well as the Borough Attorney, the Borough, and the acting Borough Administrator, the Borough Clerk, and all members of the council. I will indicate for the record that Ms. McMorris was not present for conversations involving the concerned citizens litigation. Also present during portions of the executive session was chief, was Police Chief, representatives from our phone system, our Affordable Housing Council, our Affordable Housing Planner, and our Affordable Housing Financial Advisor. Direction was given to the various professionals and Ms. McMorris regarding all the items set forth in the executive session agenda, and no formal action needs to be taken. The governing body can now move on to its regular agenda.
Okay, thank you, and we're not adding anything to the agenda in terms of resolutions. So before we adjourn to caucus meeting, can I have a motion to open to the public, please?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so if you're a member of the public and wish to speak, you could do so now or you could wait for the regular meeting and do so then, or you could do it at both meetings. If you wish to be recognized, please virtually raise your hand. If you're on camera, wave at me. If you're on a phone, just unmute yourself at the appropriate time, and it's just whoever gets called on, please state your name and address.
No one.
Can I have a motion to close the public portion, please?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn to caucus meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay, caucus is adjourned, and with the council's permission, I would like to just start on the regular meeting immediately. Ms. Duffy, is that okay?
That's fine, we're still recording.
I could just start?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council. Today is January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. It's nine oh five P. M. I call this meeting to order. It's a virtual meeting. And as such, it's conducted through Zoom. We have the Zoom meeting, virtual meeting rules and requirements in force here today. And at this point in time, I'd like to have the flag salute, so please stand. Moment to put the flag up on the screen. There we go. Repeat after me, please. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
To the republic.
To the public.
Stand.
Stand.
My nation. Under God.
Indemnity, liberty, and justice for all.
Just while we're all together, just by way of update, we, as of today, in terms of COVID- nineteen, we have ten active cases in town. The last was diagnosed today. We have a total, historic total of two hundred ten cases, and sadly, and we should have a moment of silence. There are seven deaths in town of residents, so let's actually have a moment of silence for them. Thank you, and just also as a fact point for you, I went back and checked on November third, two thousand twenty, we had ninety-one cases in town. So we have certainly seen a surge and a spike. And in two and a half months, we've over-doubled that number, so, and at that time, we had five deaths. So we, as the rest of the state and country, we have seen our spike, and I'm hoping that with continued prudence, we will be able to control things. I sent an email out to the town informing everyone of how to pre-register for a vaccine. There's obviously different criteria for when you will be eligible to get it. So I won't give you any commentary on the criteria, but I hope everyone got that email and were able to register. I did, and what happens is you get an email back confirming your registration in a few hours or the next day. Madam Clerk, we have a roll call, please.
Mayor Cranjack?
Here.
Councilperson Wu?
Yeah.
Pharaoh?
Yeah.
Park?
Yeah.
De Gregorio? Mr. De Gregorio?
You're muted.
Sorry, I'm muted. Here.
Sabari?
Here.
Katrubes?
Here.
Borough Attorney?
Here.
Acting Borough Administrator?
muted.
More are you muted?
Sorry about that. Here.
And municipal clerk, everyone's present, Mayor.
Thank you. Our municipal charity project continues. It's the Office of Concerned Food Pantry at Saint Cecilia's Church.
Your Honor, Your Honor, for the purpose of the record, the Open Public Meetings Act statement given at the beginning of the six-thirty meeting still applies.
Okay, I'm sorry, does it need to be repeated, Mr. Bernstein?
I think for purpose to the record, the meeting, this meeting has been duly advertised pursuant to provisions of Chapter two thirty-one of the Public Laws of nineteen seventy-five, and because it's an electronic meeting because of COVID- nineteen, Chapter eleven of the Public Laws of two thousand twenty and related laws therein.
I don't need to read the statement?
Want to read the rest of the statement, Lizeth? You're more than welcome.
No, not if, not if not needed.
Go ahead.
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by the municipal clerk.
Thank you, and I was saying, the Borough Charity Project of the Office of Concerned Food Pantry at Saint Cecilia's Church in Englewood. In terms of the magnitude of the need, I'll just leave you with this fact point. Last week, nine hundred seventy-five families were served by that food pantry. So if you can, try to support this project. The correspondence below is also from the Office of Concerned expressing their gratitude for all our contributions. And again, please feel free to donate by dropping off non-perishable food items at the police station. Department head reports were for December two thousand twenty were sent to all of the council. If you have any questions on those, please feel free to ask now. Or if you want, just call the Borough Administrator and speak with her tomorrow. And at this point in the meeting, I'd like to open to the public the public portion. Can I have a motion to open to the public?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so you just heard me say this earlier. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, please raise your hand virtually or wave at me or get my attention. And then just when you're called upon, state your name and address. If you're on a telephone, please just unmute yourself at the appropriate time. The rules we adopted regarding these requirements for public comment at remote public meetings are in force.
I see no hands, Mayor.
Okay, can I have a motion to close the public portion, please?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, next on the agenda is the payment of claims. This is Resolution twenty-one dash forty. These are claims from December thirty-one, two thousand twenty through January twelfth, two thousand twenty-one. The total is thirty-six thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-six cents. Got a motion to approve those?
No move.
No move.
Second?
Second.
Can you do a roll call, please?
Councilperson Wu?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
De Gregorio? Sabari?
No.
Katrubes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda are the resolutions. Twenty twenty-one forty-one, approval of mutual aid and rapid deployment inter-local agreement.
No move.
You have a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilperson Wu?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Katrubes?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is Resolution twenty twenty-one dash forty-two. This is the approval of tonnage grant application.
No move.
Second.
Can I have a roll call?
Councilperson Wu?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
Yes.
Sabari? Katrubes?
Resolution twenty twenty-one forty-three, approval of tax reimbursement certification.
No move.
Second.
Councilperson Wu?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Katrubes?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-one dash forty-four. This is a ratifying resolution authorizing the Borough Clerk to go out to bid for bathroom renovation.
It's bathroom and locker, and locker room. It's a combination of both, Mayor. I just forgot to put the word locker room in there.
Okay.
Point of order? Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Have, for some reason, I think we went out to bid on this already. Do we have new drawings or different drawings, or what's going on with that renovation?
Your Honor, either I or, if I may spare Ms. McMorris, the governing body, I believe in twenty nineteen authorized this to occur. I will indicate to the governing body, and Ms. Duffy can correct me.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty, early in twenty twenty, no such.
Late twenty twenty.
No such bids have gone out yet. The reason I asked for this ostensibly was two parts. Part one was to make sure that there was still a commitment for same and to authorize the funding for such because it was done by motion and not by resolution. And secondly, we're going to need the input of the Borough Engineer as to some of the specifications within the specs themselves. We're in the process of redoing what I would call the generic spec, the stuff that goes with every bid spec. But the bid specs need to be reviewed, especially in relation to the county grant. So I'm simply asking for ratification to allow us to go out and bid and to allow us to also get the Borough Engineer involved to the extent he needs to be relative to the specifications themselves.
That, that, so we don't have the specifications yet. We're saying we're going to have our Borough Engineer provide the specifications and go out to bid?
We're going to have our Borough Engineer assist us in reviewing what's been drafted so far by the Public Works Superintendent to make sure they're in conformance, and then we will go out to bid.
Okay, thank you.
I may, I may come off.
You have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Wu?
Didn't hear you, William.
Muted.
Muted.
Yes.
Sorry.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
If I'm to understand this correctly, this is going to authorize, if I could get a Reader's Digest version again on this, Mr. Bernstein?
We're going to allow them to, we're going to allow to move forward to promulgate the bid specification for the two projects and get the Borough Engineers' involvement in creating, in helping to finish creating it. It's a continuation of a previous action, Councilman.
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. Councilperson Sabari?
I'm going to abstain.
And Katrubes?
Yes, I'm sorry if you didn't hear me.
No, I didn't.
Yes, yes, the answer's yes.
Thank you. Okay, it passes, Mayor.
Resolution four, thank you, Resolution forty-six. Authorize non-condemnation redevelopment area study.
Mayor, you skipped over forty-five, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, number forty-five, authorize the Chief Financial Officer to solicit request for proposals for banking services.
If the council may recall, this was discussed at the reorganization meeting. The CFO was inquired. He suggested that we go out for RFQ. If the governing body show approval, we will put a memorializing resolution in to confirm same.
No move.
Second.
Councilperson Wu?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Katrubes?
Yes.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Number forty-six, authorize non-condemnation redevelopment area study.
No move.
Second.
Councilperson Wu?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
No.
Sabari?
Yes.
Katrubes?
Yes.
It passes, Mayor.
That's it. We'll get that to the Planning Board Secretary tomorrow.
Yes.
As per Mike Mistrada's request?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor has the comment to sign.
All right, I'm just.
Yes, absolutely.
More for the record that we did it, so when Mike comes back, I want to know if it got done.
Absolutely. I'll walk it down to her.
Thank you.
Okay, number forty-seven, authorize settlement of litigation Concerned Citizens versus Englewood Cliffs. Got a motion?
No move.
You have a second? Give a vote?
Second.
You have a vote?
Councilperson Wu?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
No.
Sabari?
No.
Katrubes?
Yes.
It passes, Mayor.
Thank you. Number, Resolution number forty-eight. Resolution authorize in the issuance of request for proposal for special council services. Got a motion?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
You have a roll call?
Councilperson Wu?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
No.
Sabari?
No.
Katrubes?
Yes. I'm sorry.
It passes, Mayor.
Thank you, so that's all for the resolutions. Next on the agenda are the committee and council member reports. I know you just started with your committees, so you may not have much to report, but if there's anyone on the council that would like to inform us regarding their committee or any of their committees, please do so now. Okay. Let's try for February regular meeting to have some reports for the various committees. Next is the old business and new business. I see COVID- nineteen policy here. Mr. Bernstein, is that something you're speaking to or Ms. McMorris?
I can give the updates if you want, unless Mr. Bernstein wants, so I have to give an update on the other.
The issue involves, Your Honor, to give you all an update. Apparently, prior Labor Council was asked to draft together a COVID- nineteen policy as it relates to the governor's quarantine provisions. I will indicate the governor's quarantine provisions are no longer in effect per se. Basically, the current rule is that if you leave the state for any reason other than for a one-day visit to New York, Pennsylvania, or Connecticut, you're required under the new CDC guidelines to quarantine for a period of seven days with a, with a negative test done within two days prior to your return or ten days without. But we will work with the administrator and the department heads relative to the ongoing issues involving COVID and CDC, which I will tell you changed pretty much daily.
Mr. Bernstein, is this policy regarding employees only?
It involves employees only as it relates to the borough.
Okay, good, just want to make sure.
It applies separately to everyone, but for purposes of this discussion, it applies to employees of the borough.
Yes, I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you. And Mrs. McMorris, you had some comments regarding new business?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. In regards to the going out to bid with, for the locker room and the bathroom renovations, just to let the council members know, those that are new to the council may not be aware, you're receiving grant money for the lobby bathrooms. And while Mark Neville did his best in typing up preliminary specifications, you need, you need an engineer to oversee that, to make sure that it's being done properly. Check the capital budget, there is enough money in the capital budget to be able to move forward with this project from years past. I have a quick question for Ms. Sabari. I, I checked with, with Chris Betaglia, and he said that you had no monies put aside for capital improvements at all. Ms. Sabari, I just want to make sure that's correct because I couldn't find any ordinances for capital improvements at all.
Mrs. McMorris, you are well aware that I personally am not responsible for anything. Now am I? We as a council vote on a budget, so.
Ms. Sabari, I'm trying to just, listen.
No, honestly, you're, you're actually addressing me as an individual.
Well.
Again.
Ms. Sabari.
Budget, the budget as it stood was already maxed out. We had to go out for emergency appropriate.
Councilman Sabari, if you want to take this conversation tomorrow, this is a simple question. I have been trying to put the pieces together for the past seven days. If you want to be helpful.
Have the Borough CFO there, Mrs. McMorris. Legalize him.
Mayor, if I may continue.
Don't play dumb. You're a lot smarter than that.
Mrs. Sabari, I think that the question was directed to you because you were the Finance Committee Chair. So that's why it was directed to you. It wasn't, I mean, you're, I mean, you're, please don't interrupt me. I didn't interrupt you. Please do not interrupt. That, I'm just explaining to you that the question was directed to you because you were the Finance.
You just pulled me outside.
Can I just finish, please?
You told not to.
Can I just finish? I'm going to have to mute you if you continue doing that. The reason it was directed to you, I'll do it again because we're going to draw more attention to it, and your reaction is kind of interesting in itself.
Right.
I think the answer is, Ms. McMorris, there was no money put aside for the capital budget because.
I'm quite.
We had no money.
You, yeah, exactly, because you wasted it all on our one.
No. Guys, this is not the purpose of my question.
What's the purpose then? What's the purpose of the answer?
If you would let me, and, you know, you are very aggressive in how you treat everyone up here.
I, you know what, you're pointing me out. You know the answers to your questions.
Actually, actually, Ms. Sabari, I'm trying to.
Oh, you do. You're dealing with the Chief Financial Officer. Get your information from him. He works for him.
Mayor, may I continue outside of the meeting?
Yes, hold on a second. I'm afraid she's going to keep.
Otherwise, don't address me.
Ms. Duffy, could I have control, please, of the meeting? Thank you. Ms. Sabari, please conduct yourself with some professionalism and decorum. An employee is now speaking to you, so Ms. McMorris, please continue.
I don't work for her.
No, but she works for us.
She does, and she knows where to get her answers.
Can you please be polite? Just try.
This is a woman who doesn't speak to me outside of this council meeting, so please.
Ms. Sabari.
Let's, let's humor the problem.
Why, why are you so loaded for bear tonight with this? Please, Ms. McMorris, continue.
Um, I just want to say that everyone has been very cooperative, Mayor, in, in helping me to try to get the information that, that we need. The, the budget has still not. try to get the information that we need. The budget has still not been rolled over due to whatever internal issues that they're having on a technical level. I spoke to Vince Bono. It was, in fact, the Councilman Katrubis was next to me when he advised me. So hopefully by tomorrow morning, we will have that rolled over, and we're going to start the budget prep for this year. It was a simple question. There was no ill-intent meant at all, and I thought if she could be helpful in case I was missing an ordinance that was given, just trying to find out. Okay, that's all I had to say on that. As for the locker and bathroom renovations, there is something that was not addressed during last year's advisement to go out to bid, and that is asbestos testing. And to ensure that there's no asbestos, we went through this back in two thousand and eighteen. And I know Catherine Steinell worked very hard back then in trying to get an answer to that. We may have to revisit that again, Mayor, because there's a demo, there's a room being demoed in its entirety, and it's for the female locker room, and they did an inspection with the DPW superintendent, the two engineers, and we just have to ensure how to proceed accordingly to ensure that we're following all the correct specifications. That being said, I don't know if I need council approval to come back again. I'll see what Mr. Bernstein says, but if there is asbestos testing, that will need to be done. Mr. Bernstein, can we do that out of the capital line item for, there is, I found one back from two thousand and seventeen or eighteen that's had it named asbestos slash locker that did not.
I would talk to the CFO and the auditor to the extent we may have to go out because we may have to award a contract to the removal people. That's when we'll come back.
Okay, all right, so we'll go from there. Okay, that's all I have, Mayor, and that's it.
Thank you very much for raising those issues. I just wanted to share with the public that we've made a tremendous amount of progress in the first thirteen days, the first seven or eight workdays of two thousand twenty-one. I thank Mrs. McMorro for doing that and for working with us. Mr. Bernstein, I thank you as well. Some catch-up to be done, and it's getting done. Thank you so much. At this point, I think we're, I think we're done with everything, unless somebody else has anything to add, in old business and new business. If nothing is going to be added, I will ask for an adjournment.
So moved.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening. Stay safe.
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.